All right, so let's go through the agenda of the meeting on the February.
All right, first on the agenda is, and I'm just, this is kind of a, I'm not sure anyone handles this, but, uh, filling in council committees for 2018.
Yeah, so I wanted, I mean, I sent you guys an email, I think I heard from everyone about Stuffy and Jim Kelly, um, but, you know, you know, obviously, we need a finance committee, we need a personnel committee, um, I still think we need a safety and public works committee, um, what other ones was on there? Events committee, um, pretty much, I mean, I think we need all of the committees that we had last year, in the past years, um, and so I was interested in, you know, knowing what committees people were interested in working on, um, and I heard from some of you guys, so if you have a preference.
Madam Mayor, two things, one, as far as the existing committees, point me wherever you choose. Number two, I would like to see if we can get going, and I called it the Think Outside the Box Committee, and I'd like to get some members of the community, council, whoever wants to join, to start thinking outside the box in developing and helping Latrobe to grow. I do have one individual who just moved back into the area, she spent 40 years in Silicon Valley, so I think she's got a little fresh approach to, to, uh, some ways of life, and I know she wants to get involved and do things here in Latrobe, her name is, maiden name was Gavin.
I know, right?
Rose, no?
Yeah.
But, uh, and she'd like to do this, and I'd like to see, give it a whirl, we make them up with some great ideas from our citizens, environment, business, residential, recreation, whatever the category may be. Let's see if we can encourage people to start submitting some, some great ideas that maybe do think out of the box a little bit. I'd be happy to chair it if that's the pleasure of the master.
Yeah, please.
Is that something that can be sort of like piggybacked on with the revitalization? Like, can that be?
Nope.
No. What, what, why? Why? I'm just curious.
Well, I'll be straightforward. We've had revitalization for years, it's, yeah, but this has been pretty much the same. I want ideas to go well beyond that. I want to see people think outside the box. I don't think, I think, and I'm not criticizing one way or the other, but it's basically been the same, same, same thing for all the years of the revitalization committee, so.
I don't think that's a fair statement, Jim. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't want to get into debate about whether or not you feel that the revitalization committee has been effective. I can tell you that in the past four years, prior to the revitalization committee, Mozart House, Poduff Building, the deterioration of the downtown, I mean, that, that was happening, and nothing was being done about it.
I'm not trying to say that they haven't done it, because I'm just saying it's been the same kinds of things over the years, and that's why I'm looking for something different.
I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is what, what goals and objectives, and that's something I think we need to do with every committee, is we need to determine some goals and objectives for the committee for the year.
Well, I know some of the things that were mentioned in regards to what Mr. Kelly's talking about is, is, you know, as far as the direction of the city, like, what the overall poll is going to be, you know, we're looking to bring business in, what kind of businesses do we want? How do we go about doing that? Which is why I say, you know, if you've got these wonderful concepts, maybe we need to combine every, everyone together and, and try to push in the same direction.
This isn't going to be just for business, it's for the environment.
Exactly, so the businesses, the environment, the public relations.
I think the committee's going to go beyond what the revitalization.
Here's what I would, what I would like to suggest is maybe, Jim, I would like, because we have to appoint, in addition to the committees, we have to appoint, we need to appoint somebody to the library board, parking rack, and revitalization. I would like to suggest that maybe you and serve alongside Christine on the revitalization board, and then maybe bring Mrs. Gavniky into that as a starting point, and maybe that becomes a committee attached to revitalization. So the council has, I get the feeling sometimes that maybe we don't feel that we have enough of a say in what revitalization's doing, so maybe council would feel better about having more of a say in revitalization if there were two members on revitalization, representatives on revitalization from city council. It's something to think about, and then maybe that becomes, because what I, I don't want, we have limited resources of volunteers, I think, and most of the, most of the things that revitalization are doing is, is through volunteers. I mean, we have one paid position, and the rest is volunteers. So my thought is that, you know, we try to, you know, as Christine said, row the boat in the same direction, and, and give that a try, as opposed to competing. I'm concerned about competing, that we're, that we're competing, and that we're not, we don't have a collaborative design, that we're not following a certain design. That's, that's.
Well, and then that's part of the purpose of the Out of the Box Committee, is to start looking for our identity, to see where we are going, where we should be going. I just, whatever the mayor decides, I just think it would be a bit limiting on that committee, to have it fall under another subcommittee at this point.
I guess I would just ask that we explore that, you know, for, you know, six months or a year. Would you, would you consider serving on the revitalization committee with Christine as the, as one of the council representatives to start? You don't have to answer me now, but think about it, and, and we can talk more about it, um, and we'll go from there. And then, what else? Were we missing anything? We have, so we have events, personnel, I thought we combined public works and public safety as we had done before. I don't know if we need a park, I mean, I think we need a parking committee, but if, because we got rid of our parking authority, but.
I'm not sure really what, I mean, part of the combination, the committee was helpful during the combination, now that it's part of the city operations, I'm not really sure, you know, what our options are as far as what the committee could.
Right, our hands are pretty much tied on it, because now it's done.
Yeah, I mean, there's limited things you can do with the parking.
I just guess, I guess I always thought we really needed to evaluate.
At the point in time, we needed one at a time, and we was trying to transfer it over and all this shit, more or less.
I guess I thought we, I thought we needed a comprehensive look at, at how we charge, and how, as far as permitting parking, and all that kind of stuff, but if, if we're not having any issues with that, and you guys don't think it's necessary, then.
Yeah, we could always look at revenue, but not, not as long as we can increase it.
I want to have that conversation. So, in the meantime, so I'm gonna, we'll point the meeting, we'll do that at the February meeting, appoint the committees, um, and then we'll just start having like the monthly updates. I'm not going to do it every month for the showcase thing, because we're only going to do that twice a year.
Twice a year.
Right, so, okay, what else?
All right, now, moving on, the, uh, next is the authorizing wage increases for the budget for the department heads. That'll be on the budget for around the next meeting. The transfer station rate increases, you've seen, they'll be on the next meeting. It's a minimal increases, but we need to do it to cover our costs. Uh, number four is, uh, what was done every year, is basically incorporating the various handicap parking and other items into the city charter, city code, I should say. Again, it's done every January, February.
Yeah, and the ordinances are prepared, and they've been advertised.
Yeah. Uh, then we have a number of board openings, and if you see, I've attached individuals that are interested in being reappointed to LIDA, to LMAT, to the planning commission, and there is no one for the WCTC. This will be an alternate position, it's the, what this alternate does is, there's two people on the committee, well, one person, two alternates, and they, they meet a couple times a year, it's to discuss the tax collection, you know, that's kind of why, it's rather exciting stuff, I mean, you know, anybody gets on it will really enjoy it, so.
I mean, it's, it's a position that's been open since Mike's before, so it's not something that has to be filled immediately, but, you know, it's, it should be, the alternate should be.
With my dad's resignation from LMAT board, there's a, there's a one-year term left for him, so can we do, can we appoint for both the full five-year term and a one-year reappointment at the February meeting?
Yeah, you'd appoint to fill his position.
Yeah, we would appoint to fill your father's position, and then, I guess, Mr. Deepbergh, who else?
Dominic.
Dominic would get his own five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should thank him for his service, too. What was it, Rosie, 35 years?
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up at the February meeting, yeah, 35 years he served, and his term would have been up at the end of 2019, but I think he just figured it was time, and, so.
Boy, is that interesting. Uh, number nine is, we've been asked about allowing remote.
Thank you, Jack.
All right. Allowing remote attendance at a meeting, in other words, if a councilperson is not here, it would be, some communities, we did it in other communities, where the person was able to phone in, or Skype in, or whatever, and that person could attend the meeting, basically, at a distance, and was able to vote. Now, we would have to allow, you know, make, change the, allow that vote to be.
Yeah, I'd be concerned about that, that we would have to change our charter, or something like that.
I'm not, I mean, I don't mind somebody phoning in and listening, and I don't even mind the voting, I don't mind the voting, but if we have to change the charter, plus, I, I wouldn't want them to constitute a quorum, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the charter where it addresses quorum and voting, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it as part of the administrative code, I think that that would have to be part of the charter.
Okay, yeah, and some communities have, I've allowed that, you know, I'm just saying that, what was the question that came up?
I raised a question with Mr. Jones. I'm, I will not be here in March, I can tell you that. And I recall sitting at an LMAT meeting.
They do, Casey calls in a lot.
Yeah, Casey calls in, they have, they just have a.
Yeah, but I'm particularly, yeah, I'm particularly.
So it allows you to participate remotely, and you can do it with Skype, or you can actually have the person's face, and just watch them, and see what's happening. If we need to make some changes, I understand our solicitor's concern, but it's moving into the 21st century.
I just don't want to see it get out of control.
Well, what concerns me about it is.
You know, you're, you're voted here to do a job, and, you know, if you have a vacation or something comes up, I understand that, that's going to happen, but to consistently not come to a meeting, I, I can't.
I think it encourages, I mean, because, and I got a, I have a problem with the two, because if you're, if you go to, if you go, you know, if you're going to go to Florida for three or four months out of the year, then you probably shouldn't be, you know, taking an appointment or something like that.
Right.
And, and I think it encourages, you know, it's one thing to miss a month or two.
Right.
But, or meetings or something, but I tend to agree with you, Jack, but it's something we can, you know, look down the road at if we want.
All right, I'm not sure where we go from there, whether to discuss this, or, or whatever, but the last one, there's, you had mentioned about changing the sign ordinance, are we revisiting our sign?
Well, I guess I just wanted to talk to everybody, because I'm a little concerned about too many flashing neon signs in downtown Latrobe. I don't really, I don't think we want it to start looking like, you know, Vegas Strip, so I don't think.
Pluttersnough.
Huh?
Pluttersnough.
Yeah.
How many do we have?
Well, we have, we have ours, we have five, and, and our ordinance allows for them, um, and obviously, we'd have to, but I, I'm just thinking that we might want to limit that, or do something.
You could limit the size, you could limit how bright it is, and I could limit.
Because I think it could be, lots of, if you have too many, I think.
Words, no, no picture, is that?
What can we do about the ones that are there now?
Their grandfather.
My grandfather.
Luckily, the ones that are here now, or the ours, are very subtle, I think. Like the school, it's, it's, it tells you what classes are there. Mr. Tire just says, I'm Mr. Tire.
Lake Trip Tire? Do you ever look by Lake Trip Tire at night?
Yeah, that thing's pretty bright.
Like something to my daughter's bedroom.
And those are the kind of things that.
Yeah, and that is, that could be a problem, and the ordinance does say if it becomes a nuisance, we can deal with that, so.
Yeah, that could be addressed now.
Somebody wanted to complain about it, yeah, we could look at that.
I've been working on a content neutral sign ordinance in, in any way, so I can address the use of electronic copy signs in certain zone districts, elimination, things of that nature, that's not a problem.
Yeah, we're trying to bring business into downtown, and we can't restrict them too much, you know what I mean?
No, um, I think, no, I agree, I just think you have to think about, you know, what do you want your downtown to look like? Do you want to keep a certain integrity to it, or a certain look to it, and, and, you know, or do you want it to be like, the whole way down Main Street?
Usually, they, they can't change their message more than, you know, every 10 seconds, there's no strobing or flashing.
We know that now, you can't do that.
Yeah, there, there are ways to address it that don't say no electronic signs, but you also want to make sure that they're in places that are appropriate for them. For instance, you don't want an extremely bright LED sign that's facing towards and is within 100 feet of a house, you know, you want to make sure that they're appropriate distance from residential uses, things of that nature, and that the light is directed downward as opposed to outward, you know, things like that.
Do we have that now, Zach, or no?
We do.
I, I haven't tried to look at that, so I don't know.
Loosely, but there are, I mean, if it's a nuisance, or it bothers someone, that isn't our ordinance that we can make them shield it, you know, remove the lighting, or, or remove some of the, you know, how, how it needs.
I guess I'd just like us to review it, and see if there's any recommendations to make.
I don't have a problem with making them smaller, because we allow 60 square feet on.
Yeah, that's big.
Really?
And what about making them conditional use?
Could do that as well.
Then, then they would have.
They do all kind of council, yeah.
The property owner would have to meet certain criteria, like you say, face them away from our presidential building, things like that.
Yeah, and you can also require that they have a light engineer prepare a report that shows the, they essentially have a light map, and it shows where the might, where the light is going, and what it's anticipated that the illumination would be, so.
Okay. What else?
That's it for others.
I'll talk to citizens' requests, we have any cit.
Hey, um, I wanted to talk about, I wanted to touch base with everybody again, um, about the February 17th meeting on Saturday from 10:30 to 2:30, um, and make sure that, you know, we're still, I mean, Eric had emailed me that he is going to not be able to attend. Is, is everybody else committed to coming? Because I don't really want to pull all these people in if we're not going to have a good show.
If something comes up, I'll be here.
Yeah.
February 17th.
Yeah, 10:30 to 2:30, basically. So far, I have commitments from the, um, the, some of the foundations, couple of foundations, April Kopa said that she would come and talk about the land bank, parking rack, and revitalization. And, and the idea, and I would like as many of the city folks to come as well, because I think it's a good discussion, that the foundations would kind of lay out a little bit of what their goals and objectives are, because they all have different funding criteria, and then April will talk about the land bank, because I know there have been some questions about the land bank, and, you know, what they do with the property, and how they, you know, who they sell it to. The one thing I did find out, interestingly enough, about the land bank, is even if they sell it, like the lot that they sold down here for the parklet, it's still tax deduct, it's still, it's not, it's still a taxable property, so we.
Taxable to a nonprofit?
Yes, yes, that's what April told me.
It is, it is, it went back on tax rules.
Mm-hmm.
But the ownership didn't change.
Yeah, the ownership is, is a Delphi, but that use is not.
So you're saying, okay, I'm, I'm just trying to be clear.
Yeah, like they're buildings up here that are, that are offices, they're, they are taxable because it's not their nonprofit part.
They do pay taxes on some of their buildings, yes, so it is, there is.
It's not being used for their nonprofit taxes.
I'm sorry, what?
I was, what she said, it's not being.
And I didn't know that. I just assumed that if it was sold to nonprofit, it would become a nonprofit, but it's, but that's not the case.
Would that, would that, and, does that same logic hold true for Henry's Garage?
Uh, I don't know.
In other words, they own that.
It's going to depend on the use that comes.
Yeah, they pay taxes on that.
Well, it depends on what it's used for, I guess.
It's part of their nonprofit, if they make double school there, that's not going to be taxed.
Or if they make a parking lot, what is that?
I would think a parking lot would be, but it's where they're, it depends on their use.
Yeah.
What if they own school?
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know that.
Yeah, until they, until they do something, but what is it?
Right now, it should be taxed.
What if it's just quite a grass?
What happens is, is if they get it certified as a public use or a nonprofit use, the county takes it off the tax rules, but they keep an eye on it. If it's not used for the tax-free purpose after a period of time, then they revisit it.
All right, so, um, what else? Anything else for the good of the order?
Is Pendant still starting up in March?
Haven't heard other, haven't heard anything to the contrary.
As far as we know, it's a schedule.
How about the lights on the lampposts that were?
Probably on the other side, too.
The wrong specification with the.
No, they corrected that, what do you mean, are you talking about the, on the bridge?
No, I'm talking about the ones, um, the ones that were going in downtown.
Well, there's still a question, the design committee's still looking at that, because what's available, what's going to be cost prohibitive, there's a lot of questions that's been.
We had a meeting with West Penn, and, um, Wayne, and Jared, and a couple people from, from, I guess it's not West Penn anymore, it's First Energy or whatever.
Yeah.
Anyways, um.
They weren't tall enough?
No, it wasn't that, it was, who owns, there's a lot of questions, like who owns the lines, and if we buy the poles and put them in, then there has to be separate meters to track the usage for those, and then there's questions to whether the lines are in conduit or not, which we don't want to own the lines anyways, so.
Yeah, we sent a series of questions, and we're waiting for a response back, and we just sent them last week.
Interestingly enough, and I thought it was kind of funny, you know, we asked them, you know, because originally, we thought that there would, that there was no charge to remove the poles, then they said there was, then we, then Wayne called the service center the next day, and they said there wasn't, so we're having a hard time getting.
Yeah, there's confusion on the airport, too.
Straight answers right now.
I mean, again, like the conduit, is a wire in conduit, is a wire not in conduit? It's, that's a significant question, because if it's not in conduit, it'll deteriorate over time, which means the wires going through the light are going to fall apart. So, that's a question, to me, it's significant. As far as the metering goes, a problem, we need to know where all the service trucks have to be, because the example, say you have 20 lights on a, on a line, and 10 of them you're replacing, where you're going to meter those 10, but the other 10 are not metered, so how do you physically do that?
But the thing that bugged me a little bit about that is, so they said there's a, there's like a thousand lights that they're changing out.
Yeah, 800.
Okay, and we're, we're talking about 60, and they all kind of come on at the same time when it gets dark, and they kind of go off at the same time, so why couldn't you just do, you know, if, if 800 lights cost X, why couldn't you just figure out what 60 of those 800 lights would cost? And, you know, oh my God, no, you would have thought you were asking for, you know.
Yeah, I was trying to get them to include it with the tariff, they said.
It was just weird, I mean, it was just, it was a little frustrating, but I think we'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, we've sent them, asked for some information, they'll give back to us, you know, it's, it's going to be probably depending on the cost.
What ends up being used.
Yeah, the other thing is, and that's another thing, like, if you use their lights, they only have two options, and you're, and, and they don't allow you to hang banners for them.
Can it bang, is it can it?
You can't have, you can't have a plug in it, and you can't, you know, they, I, they tend to forget that they're a service organization, you know, in some respects.
Well, that's the nice part, is you don't have to worry about the wires with meter.
Well, that's true, yeah, so if you use their, yeah, that's the other thing, if you've used their lights, then, you know, and then if they're damaged, it's on them, and if they're, you know, we don't have to replace them, so there's less, um, liability, I guess, to us, which is going to have to figure out a different way to hang our Christmas decorations and our banners, which we can figure out, I'm sure.
Or see what we can do, I mean, see how much they.
What'd you say, Zach?
I said extension.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, you know, we identified, you know, there are some areas in town that, that, you know, the lines are run from building to building, and they, they aren't underground as they should be underground, and they have to, they have to get compliant in those areas.
That's an oops on their part.
Well, an oops on their part, and a shame on us for not staying on them. I mean, I'm not talking 20, this has been 20 years.
Yeah, so, who knows where.
I don't think some of, you see, you don't even, probably even realize it's there anymore, but, you know, back at the day, this was a temporary fix, that's now been there for 20.
Yeah, I thought it was cute, they, one gentleman said, huh, it was a temporary fix, and they said, well, it's been in there for 10 years. Define temporary.
Yeah, I mean, they were nice to work with and everything, it's just, you know, and they were, they, they seemed to want to cooperate and everything, but it's just, anytime you get into a project of this size, you're going to run into those kind of hiccups, so I don't know.
And what about that corner by righty, where those big blocks are? I saw another truck had hung up on there again.
It did.
I was going through town, and it was, what's going on there?
Last, yeah, last week, I had three days in a row, basically, this was put there to protect the traffic light, the traffic signal pole and everything, because we, we don't want another truck hitting that pole. We should, once the weather breaks, the pole's being done, being manufactured for that location. It was delayed, you know, one thing with the base, the base has to be in for so many weeks prior to setting the pole, for curing for all the concrete, but, but those barriers, basically what's happening with the trucks is they're failing to properly make the right-hand turn at that location. They're not paying attention to the trailer, they're not swinging far enough out, so it's all those occasions that fell on the operators of the truck. I was there shortly after that, after we put the cement barricades back up on the sidewalk, and a truck made it through fine with, I don't know, probably Sergeant Naggio, he was there probably about three feet of the curb, so there's plenty of room. Now, what I'm working on is, I'm working on getting a sign made to post on Depot Street advising truck traffic that's going to City Brewery to use Jefferson Street.
It's a much wider turn.
And that's the truck route, although, Leggittar Street, trucks can still use, a lot of hospital trucks use that route.
Yeah, we can't, we can't stop them from using it because of the hospital, but we can advise City Brewery trucks, who seem to be the ones that are running over it, to use Jefferson. Don't you leave over there.
I can't wait for them.
I just saw that truck get stuck, and I was like, oh, this is.
Well, we, one of the trucks actually had one stuck the whole way under the trailer, the whole way to City Brewery, they drug it that far.
Really?
Yes, one of those two by two-by-sixes.
Yeah, I thought about putting a, putting a camera up there, so we can catch them, so they have to pay for it.
Well, luckily, we.
So, I mean, if they're dragging along, we're going to catch them.
Now, these past occasions that they, they haven't done any damage to our property, you know, they've done damage to their trucks. Now, luckily, we, last year, when the truck hit that traffic signal, we were able, well, the police department was able to find out who the driver was, and, and that's, you know, covered by insurance, you know, for the replacement of that pole and everything, but, but they're, they're working, you know, the cement barricades, I can't wait for them to, to be out of there, but they're, they're doing the job.
And the new light will be further back, so it won't be, it'll be less likely to get hits. It's going to be like the new style of, all the traffic lights in, in 2020 are going to replace, they sit back further, they have, their arm, the arm comes out further, and the control panel's smaller, so that's what they're going to put in there, and the rest will come in in 2020.
There's something else I wanted to mention here, too. I got an email today, um, have you heard anything about Norfolk Southern, here it is, I think, Amtrak and the state, the on and off ramp up here where people get on and off the train? Have you heard anything about that?
I don't really.
About how crappy it is.
Yeah, I think.
Sure, been that way.
Hold on a minute, let me see if I can find it. Um, I'm not sure how this happened, but I think Donner Landau sent me an email that somehow, somebody from Amtrak called him, I guess because of his connection with the chamber, and I guess they're looking at, they have to make all those things ADA compliant, and obviously, ours is far from ADA compliant, so, let's see, here's the email, let me see if I can find it.
It's not our train stop.
Huh?
It's not our train stop, it's Norfolk's train stop.
Right, Am, well, here it's Amtrak, let's see.
They have a question, they want to keep it open, if they have to invest money.
Okay, um, Bill Hollister from Amtrak Senior Manager of Government Affairs, about the status of plans for upgrading of the boarding platform in Latrobe. He said that he had just talked with the project manager for Latrobe, and reported that the survey phase of the project, which outlines what is needed to achieve ADA compliance, is nearly completed, the next phase. The next phase, which is expected to begin in February, is the design process. This addresses what changes need to be made to the boarding platform, parking and access from the parking to the platform to become ADA compliant. The design would be done, this is Amtrak's design, would be done by an architectural design consultant, and they haven't selected him yet. The design phase usually takes six months to a year, so the hope is that in early 2019, they'll, they'll begin construction. Federal funding is apparently available for ADA projects, and all stations must be compliant by 2021. This gentleman noted that there are about 500 station projects currently in various stages of survey, design, and construction. So Don had, had told the gentleman that, you know, we, to reach out to us as well, that we would, we would be more than welcoming and hospitable to work with them on...
Yeah, could you forward me the, the email? Like, we certainly contact the gentleman, and, and would like to be involved and, you know, at least be aware as well.
Yeah, um, yes, and, and the community revitalization was copied on this, as well as the Chamber, St. Vincent's, and, and we would, we, the revitalization committee, I think, would like, you know, our design guidance to be involved as well, so I'll forward it to you, Wayne.
Did you say it said that they contacted the project manager from Latrobe?
Not our proj, not like the city project manager, but the, the project manager for, for Amtrak's Latrobe.
Okay.
He just talked with the project manager for Latrobe, and it states that person's name, but it wasn't, it wasn't the city of Latrobe.
That's what I was getting.
No, it was, it was Amtrak's, whoever...
Amtrak's project.
Project manager for this area. So, so anyways, I think that's pretty cool.
Yeah, we're concerned that we'll reach out to them.
So, that's all I have.
I'm done.
All right. Thanks, everybody.